Second here, we're just waiting for the Zoom to restart.
I'm just spinning. I don't think it's gonna work. It's still being recorded in the back though.
Is it?
On TV and...
Okay. Okay, we're gonna go ahead and get started. There's still some Zoom issues, but the livestream is available through the Douglas County websites. And it is being recorded as well. We're just trying to get the Zoom fixed here. So we'll keep working on that, but we do have to go ahead and commence the meeting here, which again is being livestreamed on the Douglas County website. So we'll call the order of the meeting for our Douglas County Board of Commissioners for Tuesday, August 13th, 2024. Please note that the copy of the Open Meetings Act is located in the North Wall of the Legislative Chamber alongside an automatic external defibrillator. Please stand for the pledge. We'll commence with our Douglas County Board of Equalization. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Borgeson, Commissioner Boyle, Commissioner Kavanaugh, Commissioner Friend, Commissioner Morgan, Commissioner Rogers, Mr. Chair.
Here. First items of business are items A and B, A being the approval of the minutes of the Board of Equalization meeting held Tuesday, August 6th, 2024, and B, a call for a meeting set Tuesday, August 20th, 2024, as date for hearing on certified assessment corrections reflecting the addition of omitted property to the tax rules or increased value on property. Do I have a motion and a second? Motion by Rogers, second by Morgan. Please vote.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Thank you. Next, we have our resolutions C through H. Was there anybody here to speak on C through H by chance? And these do not include the protests that are coming up? All right. We'll still do the discussion. Yeah, we'll do discussion. Can I get a motion to vote on resolutions C through H? Motion by Rogers, second by Morgan. Go ahead, Larry.
I thought we were gonna hear from Mike first maybe, but anyway, Larry Store, 5015 Lafayette Avenue, Omaha, 68132. And I'd like to ask for a little extra time today. I know you can do that if you wish. I re-watched last week's meeting, and I have to be honest with you people. It was a very confused meeting on item C and D in this particular body last week. Rather apparent that levels of government really don't know what they're doing. You guys don't know whether you're the protest reviewers, referees, or you're not. Because even on item C last week, which was for that ninety-some page list of all the properties that were either changed or dismissed, you got into talking about specific properties and changes to those values. That was against the rule. And then when I happened to mistakenly speak on the item D, you ruled me out of order because I was not one of those with damaged property. But even those with damaged property was very confusing and very telling about... You guys are not educated on what their job is, I guess, because you didn't understand any of it either. But time after time, somebody was complaining, even this gentleman, three other people besides me complaining about the process of those values and how the comparable properties that these people say are comparable are not comparable for many reasons. And they do not want to discuss it. You do not want to discuss it. So you were out of order, but moving on, I want to present this. It kind of summarizes some of that, but it also gets into your complaining about the state being at fault for all this. No, they're not at fault for all this. You are. Item C and D, last week or this week, either one, take your pick, it relates to the meeting. I will be sending a copy of that to the state legislature or presenting it when I do go down in person. Because obviously yesterday, they were unable to make anything, any progress. But just to summarize in there, the process for protests were over as of last week before that. My property was listed on that ninety-some page thing, but I never...
We're not discussing the protests from last week.
I never got a letter.
We're discussing partial permissive exemptions.
Is this Board of Corrections on property values?
We're not talking about the protests from last week.
You need to listen to me this week.
You have to stick to the topics this week.
Because I didn't get my letter till yesterday.
Yeah.
But I was on that ninety-four page thing, and you did not let me speak yesterday. Last week, you did not let me speak, so I get to speak this week because you let people speak last week.
You gotta stick to the topic on the agenda today, Larry.
This is why the Open Meetings Act needs to be discussed here. You people need to be aware that that meeting might be declared...
Thank you, Larry. All right. That's enough, Larry. All right. That's your prerogative, Larry. Thank you, Larry. All right, thank you, Larry. That's enough. All right, any other comments on resolutions C through H? If not, we'll go ahead and vote.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Thank you. We'll now get into the section titled protests. Item one, protest of special valuation, green belt disqualification for the following parcels that are listed on the final agenda for Board of Equalization. Mr. Goodwilly?
Good morning, Commissioners Mike Goodwilly, Douglas County Assessor, Register of Deeds Office. These seven parcels all deal with the same issue by way of... And I've provided, I think, a little bench memo and some pictures and sort of a chronology of all this. But for the record, special valuation is a valuation preference that state law through the Constitution and legislation has provided to value land that is primarily used for agricultural land. In other words, land that is used for the commercial production of a plant or an animal product at significantly less than what its value would be with all of the market influences in play. And the idea was to value land that continued to be used for agricultural land on a par with other agricultural land as opposed to the developmental influences that were driving sales prices and values all around them. Put it another way, nobody pays $100,000 an acre in Douglas County to grow soybeans, okay? And with respect to special valuation, the differences are quite substantial because we don't believe there are any uninfluenced sales in Douglas County. We have to borrow sales data from places like Burt, Cass, and Oto County, primarily agricultural counties, to determine what we think ag value would properly be. So for grassland in Douglas County, we value grassland on a par with them at about $2,400 an acre. Compare that with $20 per square foot for vacant land in downtown Douglas County or $12 to $15 per square foot for vacant land in some of the development corridors of Douglas County. It's quite a substantial difference. People apply for special valuation. They have to apply by the 30th of June for the year in which they want it. State law requires us to evaluate the property as it existed on January 1st of that year, which is a little awkward because of the way the growing season works, but we always do try and follow up with what does the property look like in the spring or summertime because some pursuits take longer to develop than others. For all of these parcels, the applications told us the properties will be farmed, meaning not being farmed now. And we took pictures, and so for example, when we got the application for the parcel at 180th and Maple... Karen, can you help me with this? What the parcel looked like at 120 or 180th and Maple. The entity filed its application claiming that it was being used to farm. I ask you, does that look like farm ground to you? And this was true for these other parcels where we just saw no agricultural activity at all. So we sent out a denial letter in mid-July saying, "We don't think your property qualifies." The property owner filed protests on all these saying that we evaluated special valuation before the agricultural pursuits had started. So fair enough. We went back out in July about the same time as the protests were filed. And again, this is the parcel at 180th and Maple. Does that look much like an agricultural parcel to you? And then we decided to take one more shot at it for all of these. And this is what that 180th and Maple parcel looks like on the 1st of August. I have provided you pictures for all of them. I guess our stance on this is there was no activity going on on January 1st, hell, there's no agricultural activity going on there now. And so we believe these protests should all be denied. And with that, I would take any questions that you happen to have.
Thank you. Was there anybody in the public that was here on behalf of any of these parcels? Feel free to approach.
Good morning.
Morning.
My name is Carrie Ellinghaus. I am the Financial Officer for White Lotus Group. This is Drew Grinsberg, who helped us file the appeals upfront. And we also brought with us the gentleman who is farming the land for us, so he can also speak to that. So... Yeah, okay. So... So he is helping us with all of the parcels. Yes, all of the parcels listed.
Yeah, four of the parcels are adjacent to each other. And then the... So...
Gentlemen, could you make sure you're speaking into the mic, please?
So four of the parcels are adjacent to each other. The Civic Square LLC, those parcels are in a square shape and combined, I believe, are over five acres. And then the Triberto LLC, those two parcels are next to each other as well. And then the M-180 LLC, that is its own parcel, and it's about 30 acres, I believe. So basically, when we filed for the special valuation at that time, there was not farming activity, but we do have an agreement with Chase here at Humboldt Oaks Farms to manage and farm the properties for hay, commercial production of hay. And we have a signed agreement here for July 2nd, which is before the July 15th date, basically going over what he is going to do on the lot and how he's going to manage it.
And we should also point out that he farms other parcels for us besides the ones that are listed here where we do have approved green belt status. So he assists us from a farming perspective on not just these parcels. And some of these other parcels, not only in Douglas County but other counties, we've had that status for multiple years. So this is not just about these parcels for just this year. You want to share a little bit about your plans?
Yes, the gentleman earlier mentioned that...
Sir, can you state your name for the record?
Yes, Chase Miller. I'm the owner-operator of Humboldt Oaks Farm in Crescent, Iowa. And we run a cow-calf operation along with high-performance equine horses. The gentleman earlier had stated that some of the activity has not taken place yet. That's because our planting season for the hay in which we're planning on growing on the specific Maple 180 lots, that'll be a winter wheat, so that will get planted here late August, early September, with a harvest time of early spring of next year. So some of the planting season for what we're planning on planting in some of these lots have not happened. Other lots have... They do have a current stand of our... The orchard grasses that we're looking to grow with the broom and rye and fescue, which is a common grass that we would bale and feed to our cows and horses as it is. So in that case, we would manage the broadleaf weeds in it. And once it's tall enough to cut, rake, and bale, then we would do that accordingly as it grows. And obviously, we're not looking to grow corn and soybeans in, you know, downtown and middle of Omaha for aesthetic purposes as well, but also it doesn't fit in with the operation that we run. It works very well with our horses and cows that we would do hay in this manner. And this is the same thing that we do on our farm and other fields that we farm.
Okay, we'll go to Commissioner Kavanaugh.
And Mr. Goodwilly, maybe you could help us out with this a little bit. I'm specifically looking at 301 North 19th Street, which is downtown Omaha. I believe that's the lot that used to be the Civic Auditorium?
There's four there. There's a number of them.
Are they all that area?
Yes.
Okay. So these four properties are basically in the heart of downtown Omaha, right?
They are.
And they're claiming that they're gonna do ag-related on these properties.
Well, that's what they've said on their applications, is what they're saying now.
I understand that. And I was just wondering, based on, and I'm no expert on this, zoning law, can you farm in downtown Omaha?
That's a great question. I've reached out to the city, and I don't really have an answer on that as yet. What I can tell you, though, is that, at least for this year, what I'm hearing is, "Well, we're going to do this. We're going to do this. We just signed a contract." January 1st is the magic date for this year. There wasn't any agricultural activity going on here, so I think this year for sure, they don't qualify. If they actually do it, they say...
And that's what we're talking about here today. So we've had this case before where, you know, you can do, speculate about whatever you're gonna do in the future. You're not there now. You're not raising crops. You weren't raising crops at the beginning of the season. And obviously, it's an empty lot in the middle of downtown Omaha.
Pretty much.
Can I speak to that?
Sorry? I'm sorry. Pretty much, did you say pretty much?
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay. So, gentlemen, I guess...
Can I speak to that one minute?
Yeah, yeah. Not half a minute, but you guys...
No, not half a minute. But so that was one of the lots that I had spoken to earlier that has already been planted. It already has the grass in place. It is growing. So right now, it's a matter of managing the weeds, which we did. We were actually there spraying yesterday. And it's a matter of managing the weeds so that it can grow long enough. But the crop is already in the ground and growing.
Theoretically, you know, I branched when I was young, and I put up hay when I was young, and I fed cattle when I was young.
Sure.
And I understand that. This is a square block in the middle of a major city, and you're saying, "We're gonna make it a hayfield." Am I right there?
Correct. And so for a new farmer...
That's all I'm asking.
For a new farmer...
Sir, that's all I'm asking.
Okay.
Proposed to make it a hayfield. The point is, January 1st was the drop dead date for doing that.
Which was planted on January 1st.
And that's not any fault of yours. I just would say, on these properties, they are multiple red flags, I guess, in terms of the use of the Green Belt Act, which is for properties that, you know, are designated as agricultural, because they are. These are city properties in the heart of the city. And if you came into my neighborhood over in Dundee and said, "We're gonna take a block and level it and raise crops," you're gonna have a problem. And this is a city. This isn't rural Crescent, Iowa, wherever. This is a city, and you're going to the heart of the city. There's a block, I think a block away, that used to be the U.P. headquarters, which has some grass on it. And there's a couple of blocks at 72nd and Dodge, used to be the crossroads. They don't even have grass on it, most of it, but none of those could conceivably be characterized as agricultural properties.
Yeah, but we do plan on reaching out to them.
I salute the developers, whoever they are, for their imaginative attempt to use green belt in the middle of a major city, but I don't think that that's what green belt is designed for.
That's time. Thank you, Commissioner Kavanaugh. Commissioner Rogers?
I wanna... I mean, I'm just... Do you know if every other green belt that's like somewhere out in Bennington or somewhere like that, they gotta be zoned differently? To continue that line of questions?
I really don't. The reason we're...
I'm almost sure.
The reason we're having this discussion is because for a long, long time, you could not qualify or maintain special valuation status if you were within the incorporated limits of a city, village, or an SID, okay? So once you got annexed, you were done. Several years ago, the legislature changed that. And so now, this is sort of the inevitable outgrowth of that, is a creative developer who wants a significant valuation discount is going to talk about special valuation even though he's in a parcel that would never have qualified at one time. And I think the legislature's reaction to remove that requirement, that you're not in a city, village, or SID, was as a result of cities grabbing land that was currently being farmed, and suddenly, they were thrown out of special valuation. I don't know that their intention was to create this situation for real estate developers. As far as the zoning, I really don't know.
Well, I guess to... Instead of wasting more time, I mean, this is a valiant effort. But I'm just saying, I can't agree with this. The precedent this was set? I mean, the legislature may say that you can do it, but somebody's gonna have to take this to court and make some case law because the precedent that this was set, I mean, I'm visioning CHI taking their parking lot and putting some cooperative extension boxes of stuff implanted there and being able to say that this is ag land because somebody's going there and...
Well, what the legislature did try to do is they said that if you have a parcel that's less than five contiguous acres, you do need to provide your IRS Form Schedule F gain or loss from farming for several years prior to show that you were farming it.
They don't have it.
You can get into arguments about here what contiguous is, though. The two parcels for Tribeto, they don't touch. They're nearby. Okay. Let's get a little closer and a little better. Whoa, stop. Can we focus that? Beautiful. So you've got one that's 3.71 acres, which is less than five. You've got another that's 4.37 that's less than five. If you want to call the two contiguous, it exceeds five, but there are two parts... There's at least one parcel with several large buildings in between. I didn't raise that issue really today as part of our case in chief because it was clear that as of January 1st, there really wasn't any agricultural activity going on on site. But yes, you're gonna see these kinds of arguments, Commissioner. Absolutely. Thank you.
We'll go to Commissioner Friend.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So...
So, Mike, just to reiterate, I'm not sure this was their intent, but Commissioner Kavanaugh, and it was, it's valid. His points were somewhat philosophical. Commissioner Rogers made some more practical, valid, somewhat valid points as well. I guess my question is, just so, let's reiterate this. Do we know right now, at this very moment, how all of these are zoned? We don't have that information in front of us.
No.
Correct? Okay. That, that's pretty valid. The reason I say that is because if, if they're zoned- Costco had to jump through hoops to do what they needed to do at 180th and Maple, okay? I would consider you guys jumping through hoops right now. But the bottom line is, they had to fundamentally change that zoning. Commissioner Rogers has a decent point. There are legal ramifications to this. I have no idea what's going to happen. But the fact of the matter is, if this stuff is not zoned rural residential, I don't care if you plant winter wheat. That's illegal. So what I'm wondering is, are we going to rubber stamp something that says, hey, look, I want you guys to do what you need to do. I'm not trying to placate you. I want you to do what you need to do with the land. And I understand the point here. What I'm saying is, I don't want to rubber stamp something, and I don't have all the information in front of me. You're asking for an exemption because it's not rural residential or ag? Then we're jumping through another hoop. Who else comes in here later on and asks for that exemption to the philosophical point that Commissioner Kavanaugh made? I don't know what to do with this. I think we need to find out what the zoning looks like, and we need to make some rational decisions based on what state law indicates that we can actually do and not do. So, I mean, I don't know if that helps, but, Mr. Chair, that's all I had.
Let me go to the next commissioner, and if he would like you to answer, you can. Commissioner Morgan?
I did go down. I talked to Mr. Goodwilly last Tuesday after our meeting, and he asked me maybe to take a look and drive by. And I did drive by. And I don't see that this is being agricultural use at all. And I called you back. I think you'd verify that, Mr. Goodwilly, and we discussed it. I mean, we want to always be as fair as we can, but I don't think this is appropriate to make it agriculture land at all when you look at the use. So, that was what I did.
Thank you. We'll go to Commissioner Borgerson.
This is more of a hypothetical, but if their crops would have been grown as of January 1, then the current law does that, they would fit within the current parameters of the law, correct?
Within the square corners of the Green Belt statutes and the 77, 1300s in Nebraska revised statutes, yeah, that's right. There is no, there is no, there is nothing in the Green Belt eligibility statute that talks about zoning.
So-
I think, I think that was, I think that was sort of subsumed in the notion that if you were in the city limits, you couldn't do ag. So that really wasn't an issue. So when the legislature changed the law, they made no mention of zoning. And we aren't the zoning police. So were they to do that, they might, they might qualify under the four corners of the Green Belt statutes, but they might have a problem with the city in terms of zoning.
Well, and that goes back to even a bigger question that they would have to have had that zoning in order to even do what they're wanting or did. I mean, they already planted. They just planted-
I don't know if they plant it or not. I mean, the farming gentleman said there was, there's a crop on the Civic Square parcel. What I don't know is if anybody actively planted it or are these just naturally growing grasses or weeds? What I do know is that these folks have told us they didn't have a farming contract until the 2nd of July.
Okay, so my point to all this is that, as it stands today, because this stuff wasn't completed by January 1, it kind of exempts them from being eligible for the Green Belt. But say that during this year, they've planted the crops, they're growing, you go back on January 1, and throughout this time, they're taking pictures, they're showing it was farmed, and January 1 comes, and they qualify under the current confines of the law today, correct?
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. We'll go to Commissioner Rogers.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. But, well, let me ask, you're the CFO, right, sir? Do you, you should know, do you know what is zoned? Because I'm sure when you all came to the city to develop that down to Civic, you had to have zoning requirements.
So when I talked to the assessor's office, who is, who we're supposed to turn these forms into, they said the zoning has nothing to do with the Green Belt. And so, you know, I'm trying to start like a big argument here, you know? We just looked at the Green Belt. We have a farmer who's interested and-
Okay, fair, fair question. But, so I'm trying to just play this out because, for instance, there's a couple of places in Gifford Park where people are having chickens and other things, and it's their residential, personal property, but they have to get it zoned a certain way to have chickens. And I'm trying to play this out. This is not considered personal residential property. This is, I know, considered commercial property. So even though it's not required, I'm trying to play to myself in the spirit of the law, this is not considered, you know, Green Belt. And let's say, just for the simple fact that commission, that was just made by the last line of questioning, the simple fact that it wasn't there January 1. But I'm not a farmer, but I'm assuming most of this stuff, somebody has to be digging, somebody has to be doing some certain things. And I almost drive by that site every day. And I have seen nobody digging. I have seen no plows or hoes or anything that are normal. I haven't seen anything that my grandmother would do to prep the gardening outside her home that she did for years. So I mean, I'm just trying to see, there's no signs of anything like that actually.
I think I can speak to that a little bit. And I'm sure a gentleman here that spoke to, doing hay in the past, most people don't realize, a lot of the grasses that do grow are the same grasses that we raise for hay. The fescue and the rye and the broom grass. A lot of that is your typical yard grass. So being that it is already there, you won't see the discs going by and the big planners going by and a combine rolling down the street. That is no way our intention whatsoever. It is our intention to keep a small of a footprint and use what we already have there as a small farmer and as an up-and-coming farmer, trying to use the best of our abilities, what is already in place in order to raise good quality hay for livestock.
How tall does that have to grow to be able to hay it?
Typically, 12 inches.
One foot.
One foot, correct. The more, the better. More hay you end up with makes your time worth a little bit more. But 12 inches, and you could get a decent, decent hay bale out of it. Does that answer your questions?
Pretty much. Thank you.
Would I be correct in saying that on the grasses?
That's right. And you're not talking about grazing cattle?
No, not grazing cattle. Just raising the grasses that are already in place for hay.
We'll go to Commissioner Friend.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Final point, not once, to the best of my knowledge, in the last four minutes that I was talking to, did I say that this is violating state law. I don't have that in front of me. So in other words, the Green Belt, state law allows certain, implies or allows certain things in the assessors following that Green Belt, that state law. I didn't say that. A metropolitan-class city, and there's only one in the state of Nebraska, and that's Omaha, has zoning authority. Every one of these parcels is within the zoning authority of the city of Omaha. Doesn't matter what the assessor's office does. If you're violating zoning authority, you're going to run into weird issues. So what we're asked to do is to rubber stamp something that could be violating zoning authority. That's all I'm saying. Doesn't mean you're violating state law. A metropolitan-class city has statutory authority over certain functions. There's a reason that, I don't want to throw their names out, but when I lived in Keystone, there were all kinds of guys doing Green Belt work over there, growing, growing produce and doing all kinds of things. They were in front of the city of Omaha all the time. What I'm saying is, I don't know what the ramifications of this going to be, this are going to be. So we can say, yeah, go ahead. Knock yourself out. My prediction is, if you even care, is that the city of Omaha is going to have a say in this eventually. So just crystal ball. Mr. Chair, that's all I had.
Thank you. We'll go to Commissioner Borgerson.
I guess my point to all this is, is where you're in a weird predicament is, as of January 1, none of what you talked about had occurred. So that kind of throws you out of the running to have this Green Belt designation until they relook at it next January in order for that to all apply. That's all I'm saying, is that as the current law is written, you would qualify as long as all those other conditions would have been met by January 1. And they weren't. So what I think has to happen is there has to be another review come between now and the next January 1 to see if of all those, if all those qualifications you've now been able to check off.
Yeah, I think to your point, it is our intent to document the growth and the harvesting on these plots, that it is our intent to refile for the next year. We understood when we filed for the current year that the farming would occur during the year, right? And that we would do our best to make sure that what was farmed on those plots was consistent with what was already there, which is what our farmer has also shared. So we believe, as was discussed, that we have followed the guidelines for the Green Belt status. And we appreciate that you're hearing, hearing our argument with that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Just for point of clarification procedurally, we can hypothetically move to deny the protest. If you agree, Mr. Goodwilly, we could hypothetically move to grant the protest if we agree with the parcel owners. Is there a will of the board at this point?
I would move to deny.
Motion by Rogers, second by Morgan. The motion is to deny. Is there a further comment? Larry, you're going to comment on this? Mr. Seibert, go ahead.
Alan Seibert. Alan Seibert, 5537 North 140th Street. A few months ago, this, there was a property that came up for review on Green Belt status on South 180th Street. That's actually, I talked to, there's a tractor group on, oh, man, and there were several guys in that group familiar with that. And they said they were disappointed about that not getting Green Belt because they said that there's, that's actual natural prairies. So that's going to be lost. But anyway, at that time, I was looking at state statutes. And what I found, and I think what you need to research, somebody needs to, production was removed as a requirement for Green Belt status. That Form F that Mr. Goodwilly was talking about. And that's also supported by the categories of Green Belt status. And I don't have, I don't have my statutes and stuff in front of me right now, but off the top of my head, irrigated cropland and non-irrigated were two of the categories. Grassland, orchards, and also wasteland. I think what you need to keep in mind is what the intent of the, of a Green Belt status was. And if a farm got surrounded by the city and was still being farmed, I think they were trying to protect Green Belt. And I think these guys, that property out there has always been farmed. But whether it's sitting as wasteland or not, I mean, that also, I think that has to do with whether Conservation Reserve program, if it's in that, that ground is going to sit as wasteland. It'll have to have some kind of cover crop on it at one time or another. But and the history, whether there was a history of agriculture should play into whether it gets Green Belt status. So I think there's a few things you guys need to, I agree with Commissioner Friend. The legislature needs to get this straightened out. Either that or the appeals court, Nebraska Supreme Court, needs to go in front of them because it's, it is confusing. But I think it should still have Green Belt status. From what I've seen, I live out in that area, and I've gone by there. It's been scraped off, but I think that's a, these guys didn't do it. It was scraped off because of all the development and stuff around it. But anyway, thank you.
Thank you. Anything else?
Larry Store, 5015 Lafayette Avenue, Omaha, 68132. We have a community garden right there in Dundee. I want to point out some inconsistencies in this process. Earlier in the Board of Equalization, when I looked up the website, C Attachments, there are, were some discussions that should have been held about permissive or full permissive or whatever, exemptions for this or that. One of your jobs is to help the citizens and to help the businesses. So why not in a meeting like this, instead of maybe sending these people off with disqualifications, since you seem to be able to set as a Board of Corrections, Board of Equalization, you could maybe help them right now change their designation to that piece of property is a community garden? Or apply for TIF? Because without it, their cropland won't get built in the city of Omaha unless they get TIF. Or let them call it a piece of religious property and give them an exemption for religious purposes. Because a lot of that stuff you do is based on intent. Intent on what was in the paperwork. You never follow up on whether that intent's being followed or not. One of those things was an Islamic center getting tax exemption.
Stick to the topic, Larry.
But these people bought a piece of property or two pieces, and they don't get any help. Help them change the classification and help them determine that fit, if they can apply under or change it today and call it a community garden or two community gardens. Help them apply for TIF. If nothing else, let them hold a church service on there once a week and declare it a religious exemption. There's lots of ways you can help these people that are trying to help inbuild the city of Omaha. The city of Omaha wants to do that. They want infill. So help them. But maybe they want that, take that property from these people for another high-rise that gets TIF. Thank you.
Thank you. There's a motion to deny in front of the body. Is there any other comment? Seeing then, we'll vote.
Motion passes seven to zero.
All right, thank you for being here. Motion to adjourn Board of Equalization by Rogers, second by Morgan. Please vote. Please vote.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Thank you. Please note that the Board of Corrections has been rescheduled to Tuesday, August 20th, 2024, as our director is out of state currently. That leads us to Board of Commissioners. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Borgerson, Commissioner Boyle, Commissioner Kavanaugh, Commissioner Friend, Commissioner Morgan, Commissioner Rogers, Mr. Chair.
Here. First item of business are items 1A and B. A being the approval of minutes of the Board of Commissioners meeting held Tuesday, August 6, 2024. And B, the approval of claims submitted to payment, excuse me, for payment process through Tuesday, August 13, 2024. Do we have a motion of second? Motion by Rogers, second by Morgan.
Mr. Chair, Douglas County Clerk D N S, you know, since we don't meet next week, item B should say through Tuesday, August 20. So, can I get that friendly amendment to the item, please?
Look good.
Do we meet next week? I'm sorry.
Yeah, we do.
Disregard me, sorry about that.
Disregard that amendment. But there's a comment by Commissioner Kavanaugh.
Thank you. I just have a question for the record, and I see that Director Kathy Allen is there. So, if she could come down on item C, authorize resolution to establish the 911.
Commissioner Kavanaugh, we are almost there.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Right now, we're just doing A and B real quick.
Yep.
It's just the minutes. All right, if nothing else, we'll vote.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Thank you. Now, we'll go to consent agenda, items A through G. Do I have a motion of second for discussion? Motion by Rogers, second by Morgan. Now, we can go back to Commissioner Kavanaugh.
Thank you. On item C, just for the record, so that the viewing public can understand what this is, approve resolution to establish the 911 service surcharge in the amount of 50 cents per month in Douglas County as authorized by state statute. And I see Director Allen is with us supporting, thank you. Could you just outline for the public so folks could understand what exactly we're doing here?
Sure. Kathy Allen, Douglas County 911 Director. What this is, is by state statute, we have to declare by September 1 of every year what our surcharge is going to be. But, on the other hand, we're limited to 50 cents by the Nebraska State Legislature. So, that's all we can charge and that's more of an administrative thing on what we're doing here is just declaring that we are charging 50 cents per what's already allowed.
Okay. And this needs to be done by statute by what date?
September 1.
Okay. Just let me take this opportunity to say what a great job you folks do at 911. I've been out there numerous times and I really am impressed by the professionalism and how the new 911 center has really increased the availability of that important public safety service to Douglas County. And what a great job you do as an administrator with that department, you and your people do a super service to the citizens of Douglas County. Thank you.
Thank you. It's, it's my staff, they, I have, they're great. Like briefly, I don't know if this is the time or place, but the night of this storm was far worse than the night of the tornado. We took over almost 5,000 calls in a six-hour period. And it was crazy. And we had 13 extra staff come in just in a matter of 10 minutes to help us out. So, thank you for recognizing that.
That's super. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Allen and Commissioner Kavanaugh. Anything else on consent agenda? Otherwise, we'll vote.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Thank you. That leads us to presentations, topic tabled from last week as far as the special session and relevant bills that were listed previously on the agenda. Marcos, do you want to give us an update on special session and where everything is at?
Sure. Yeah, so Marcos C. Martin, Douglas County Administration. Yeah, Commissioners, the, the bills you saw, you, you have before you on the agenda, you know, the session has really evolved and, you know, there, really what's, what's at play right now is, there is an amendment that's been filed last night. It's called AM 73 to LB 34. And essentially, that is the bill now, as we understand, or will become the bill that will be debated, that blends together the original LB 1 and LB 9, which is, LB 9 is a TOSA bill. LB 1 is the governor's tax bill. So, what we now understand in play, at least today, what is anticipated for debate in the legislature is going to be this AM 73, which is an amendment to LB 34. And when the chair says appropriate, I'm, I'm more than happy to go through a summary of that bill, that amendment that's been filed. But, you know, as it stands right now, the bills before you, which are four support bills and three opposed bills, maybe I flipped that around, you know, they, I, I guess I would say that they're, they're not really in play. The, the bill that is in play right now, like I said, is this amendment, AM 73 to LB 34.
And could you give a, a high-level overview of especially how counties are affected by the latest amendment?
Sure. So, the latest amendment, it, it has a couple changes since LB 1 came out. I'm going to just bring up the summary that I have here. So, as I said, Commissioners, this AM 73 to LB 34 is a blend of LB 9, which is the TOSA bill, and the LB 1 bill, which is the governor's property tax bill. And what is, what is inside this AM 73, I'll just refer to it as that going forward, AM 73, there is a cap or limit on local government spending. That cap or limit is zero or an inflationary indicator, not a CPI. So, it's an inflationary measure that is, it's tracked every year by the U.S. Department of Commerce, not by the Department of Labor. We're still researching what that inflationary measure is. But that is, that is new and inside the bill, inside AM 73. And what it does is that that cap or limit will apply to the portion of our budget that is essentially not public safety related. So, public safety related, including county attorney and public defender, are 100% exempt. Their budgets are 100% exempt from the, from this cap or limit. The rest of the county's budget and city's budgets that is not public safety related, they would be subject to the zero or inflationary measure, limit or cap. So, that's, that's one major piece that's still within AM 73. Another major piece is that it does have, it does provide language for jail reimbursement. Right now, as it stands, it still is specific to counties that follow the jail standards board rules. And it would have to be, any kind of reimbursement would have to be certified and, or determined, certified and then, you know, approved by the jail standards board for reimbursement. As of right now, the number in there would be a 50% reimbursement to counties if, as they qualify. And then, then the rest of the bill really is related to sales tax. It does increase significant portions to sin taxes, cigarette packs. Various other services will be, will be taxes, sales tax, et cetera. So, hopefully, that's enough of a broad overview of what is in the bill. What relates to us the most would be that, that, since the, the budget limit or cap at zero or inflation, or, you know, the inflationary indicator and jail reimbursement.
Commissioners, Patrick Bloomingdale, County Administrator, if I can jump in real, real quick, that jail reimbursement is not going to apply to Douglas County because we don't follow jail standards, we follow the American Correctional Association. So.
That's correct.
Hopefully, that language can be added at some point so the county can take advantage of that.
Yeah, that's a good point, though, for additional context, our lobbyists said that that was not an intentional omission of Douglas County, it was just a technical omission since we follow the, the other association at a national level for, for correction standards. So, they're working on that technical piece. There also was formally, in previous amendments, reimbursement for, for court staff, that's no longer in there. So, they're looking for ways to cut the expenses side of what they were looking to, to reimburse counties and support counties with, that's being cut down because they're having to balance out what they're trying to do. So, jails have, have gone from 100% reimbursement to 50% reimbursement and court staff reimbursements are no longer in play either. So, with that update, we'll get into discussion here. Commissioner Kavanaugh?
Just from the outset, I, I have to say that nothing has changed since we passed the original resolution opposing these ideas, maybe not in their specific form, because the form is changing as the legislative process goes, it's changing hourly. And so, this is a moving target. I think the important thing is to understand that we oppose the concept of LB 1, LB 2, LB 16, LR 5CA. There's nothing in this for us other than chopping our revenue. The exemption does not include mental health or public health. The reimbursement for the county corrections does not include Douglas County. So, there's nothing in this for us. I don't know that passing this resolution is going to have much effect. I, I got to say, I was reminded of this the other day when I was watching a, an old clip of Martin Mull, who was a comedian years ago. And he was doing an act and somebody interrupted him. And he said, well, thanks for your comment. I often go to Rams football games and I'll, I'll go down to the sidelines and I'll, during the game, and I'll talk to the coach and I'll say, just answer a couple of questions, Coach, real quick. And I go to Creighton games and I often go down to the sidelines and talk to Coach McDermott during the game and just kind of give him some of my ideas on what he should be doing. That's what we're doing here. We've got a game in play. We have adequate, more than adequate, very good representation down there. And going down this route and passing these, it's like going down to the coach in the middle of the game and say, hey, Coach, I think you should go to the full card press or the five game or something like that. It's happening and this is a moving target. And, you know, I think, I, I, I understand what's going on here and, and Marcos, thanks for the update, but this is all stuff that we opposed and we've opposed from the outset. And our representative in Lincoln knows we oppose this and he's not asking for any more clarification. Just play the game. And what we are looking at here is opposing all of this stuff because it's bad for the citizens of Douglas County and it violates our local control. We're elected by the citizens of Douglas County to oversee the budget administration of Douglas County. We do the best we can. And this is a power grab by the governor and the state to take local control out of the hands of the local electorate. And it's not really going to improve things, as a matter of fact, in light of the services we've talked about, including especially mental health and, and public health. It's going to very badly impact those. And so, I think, you know, my inclination is, if you want to do this, find it's not going to have a lot of effect. We oppose this initiative in its entirety as it's outlined here by Marcos and as being Representative Lincoln by our representative, Mr. Kelly. Beyond that, the game's afoot. And so, this isn't going to be something that senators go, oh, my gosh, Douglas County passed a resolution this morning on these bills in this quorum and therefore, I'm going to change my, my position. I don't know that that is going to have that effective impact. We need to let people know we're opposed to this purely, simply because of the reasons that I outlined, and it's going to have a bad effect on the life of residents of Douglas County. That's, that's where we should be.
Thank you, Commissioner Kavanaugh. We'll go to Commissioner Boyle.
And I couldn't agree more. I think the importance of all of this is really just to help make the citizens know that we are not, we also agree that property taxes are a problem. We're all property taxpayers. We would like to see this addressed. The biggest issue with this particular proposal going on at the state is that the, the state has things like unfunded mandates, you know, they, they, they're not going to pay for the services that they're telling us that we are required to provide. So, at the same time, they're telling us that we can limit the amount of revenue we're able to bring in to pay for these services. So, we have to cut somewhere. We can't cut court services. That's something that absolutely has to be there. Commissioner Kavanaugh is exactly right. This is going to impact things like mental health and public health. I look at other things with a, a 0% cap or just using an inflationary index, when we have our employees come in from, from places that are not directly public safety, for example, is the juvenile, is juvenile detention center public safety per se? Well, if that's not included, that means that their raises will be limited to that 0% or an inflationary index. Say that to the unions when they're coming in and trying to negotiate that, you know, where are we going to take the money from that? Are we going to take that from, are we going to take it from general assistance? Where are we going to get this, this money? So, I think by putting such a tight limit on us, it's limiting what we can do for those things that they are not outlining specifically as public safety, such as mental health, public health, juvenile services, there are just some, some, I'm very concerned about that. And the other thing I think is incredibly short-sighted of the, of the state is that these, it's these unfunded mandates. They're making us do things that we have to pay for, but they're telling us that we have to really take it from places like, I don't know, the sheriff's office, you know, the, the other public servants, the public elected officials' offices. We have to take it from their budgets and we have to do, have, take draconian measures like say, okay, everybody has to have a 10% budget cut across the board because we can't afford paying the sheriff or paying the county attorney because we, because the state is mandating these things and we can't give raises because of this limit. So, I think my biggest concern is for, again, like Commissioner Kavanaugh said, the citizens of Douglas County will be affected by these cuts. And when services are cut and they're angry, it's like this, it sounds like we're passing the buck, but it's because we have a 0% cap on what we can pay our employees. So, we have fewer employees and they're not just employees, they're public servants, they can't do their jobs anymore. So, so I'm frustrated because it's really limited in the ability to, to, to take care of the citizens of Douglas County. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Boyle. Real quick on my end, so debate does start this morning at 9:00 a.m. in the legislature on this amendment. Marcos, as a technicality, they're trying to still approve even the amendment itself into LB 34, is that correct? It hasn't been approved yet?
That's correct, yeah.
Yep. So, the amendment itself may or may not even get adopted today. So, that's still in the air as well. So, our lobbyist is down there as we speak and will keep us posted on everything. As for now, you know, I think NACO, I think the League of Municipalities, I think our resolution in July all still stand true against the hard caps, against taking away local control and having a sufficient budget for all our departments. So, this was technically a presentation that could have action taken to it, but we don't actually have to have action taken to it if we don't want to. So, it's up to the board. If there's not a motion, then we can move forward. If there is, then we can consider it. Commissioner, oh, go ahead, Commissioner Rogers.
I approve all the oppositions and approval items under presentations.
Motion to approve the recommended support and opposed on the agenda as listed? Does that capture it correctly, Commissioner Rogers? Okay. Second by Borgerson. Any debate on that? Larry?
Larry Store, 5015 Lafayette Avenue, Omaha, 68132. And Dan, that handout that I gave you earlier, part of that applies to this topic. Regarding the loss of control, the tables seem to be turned. You people are supposed to work for us, but that local control by we, the people, suddenly got taken by you people. Well, now you're crying because the state is taking the local control away from you guys. But what are you doing to stop it for us? You hire a lobbyist and do what you want to do without consulting us. Now, I want to tell you something about what I found last week on the amendment process. But first of all, the Open Meetings Act requires me, still, it's not been amended out, but it requires me to make protest here and now in order to be able to sue you if I choose to. to. But the Open Meetings Act got secretly amended. And then all of a sudden, there's a new version over there, which, by the way, it interrupts the meeting for us to go over and look at the Open Meetings Act. And last week, I was kind of chided by the secretary of the city council for even looking at it. What's that? Loss of control that. But LB43, they buried an amendment to the Open Meetings Act inside LB43, which had nothing to do with it. To update that document there, as of July 19th of this year, effective when passed, that was just before the last two meetings. There was nothing said in this body or the city council about that being amended. But they used it against me last week, week before, without telling me that the act had been amended. They didn't want me looking at that either. Anyway, that's what amendments do. I'm not a lawyer, but I don't like some of the lawyer tactics, which some people call lawfare, sneaking something in to take more control away from the citizen, such as limiting my time at the podium. And maybe even, if you care to read it, saying that we could only come to these meetings once a month or maybe not at all. That's what they're doing and you're letting that happen. So you must be for it. You need to oppose that also, Mr. Lobbyist. How much do I pay out of my billfold for that? I will be presenting a copy of that with additional remarks to the committees at the Educational Military Government Committee, yeah, supposedly anyway. The Open Meetings Act needs to be debated. And I guess one way you can keep citizens from suing you is to interrupt me and have me moved out before I get a chance to protest. That way I don't qualify and I don't have what they call standing because I didn't officially say, "I'm protesting this meeting right here today and I'm going to sue your arms off under the Open Meetings Act." But I don't intend to spend your time and our resources, our money, to do that.
10 seconds.
We could have a friendly discussion, though, if you choose. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments on the motion? Commissioner Kavanaugh?
Yes, I said at the outset, I, you know, I don't think this is necessary, but I want to make it clear. I'm opposed to these and I think the sense of the board is we're opposed to these. It's just, from a practical point of view, not, I think, going to have much of an impact on the legislators if we pass or don't pass this resolution today. And so, you know, I'm inclined to make a record of my opposition, again, to LB1, LB2, LB16, LR5CA, in whatever form they are. I don't think they can be fixed at all. As far as we should be reimbursed, as Commissioner Boyle said, for services that the state imposes on us, absolutely. We have fought that war for 30-plus years and that's been our position for all of that time. I think that the ideas contained in LR1CA, LB28 and LB53, as they've been explained to us, are things that we could support. Passing a resolution today on these numbers, which may change a lot in the next few hours, is kind of an exercise in futility. And so I'm going to abstain, but I want the record to be clear that that's my position and I think the board's position. And regardless of whether or not we pass this amendment, that's our instruction to our representative, Mr. Kelly in Lincoln, to oppose these things and support these things. We've been on record to do that since we passed the original resolution. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Morgan?
I will also abstain because we really don't know what's going to end up taking place and we haven't for several weeks as they continue to debate it. So I don't think it has any effect anyway. So I'll be abstaining.
Commissioner Friend?
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
I was going to wait till the end, but look, this legislature is nowhere near any semblance of clarity relating to what they're actually trying to accomplish. And I've read, I know what's out on general file today. I think there's only two bills out on general file. I know what they're trying to lump into 34. Not sure I understand it and I'm not sure they do either. As I mentioned last week, in my humble opinion, I don't, I don't think they're dealing with the key issue. There are bills out there that deal, in my opinion, with the key issue, but they're, to some of the folks here that made the point, they're not going to get, they're not even going to address them. They're not even going to address assessments. They're not even going to put it up for a vote. They're going to, they're going to, they're going to table it. Even if they did have language clarity right now, even if, even if we had language clarity based on what they're trying to accomplish, local governmental subdivisions, the impact on the local government subdivisions would be difficult to assess. I don't, I don't have a bunch of fiscal notes in front of me. They don't either. What they're doing is running a bunch of copy out in front of everybody and they're playing, somebody has made this point before, I think it was Commissioner Kavanaugh or maybe, it's, "Let's make a deal. Let's try to figure out exactly what's going to get us 33 votes because that's what they're going to need." Folks, they're making sausage and it's a short session. Making sausage in a long session, that's difficult to watch. But making sausage in a short session, that is brutal. That is dangerous and brutal. I don't think our initial, I think, well, let's put it this way. I don't think yet, I don't think we know yet, that I, I know, I don't theoretically know that all of these things that I'm supposed to oppose today and all the things I'm supposed to support, I don't think I know yet that I do because they don't know. I believe our initial resolution a few weeks ago stands. I think they get it. Here's what's important. People make this point, I'll just end right here. People make this point, they say, "Hey, the beauty of this is, is they're exempting public safety." That's great because public safety is numero uno, right? I mean, if you stripped everything else away from local governmental subdivisions, constitutionally, that's what we're supposed to deal with. However, there's a state statute behind another 20% of the stuff that they're not exempting. Everybody says, "Well, you guys better get used to it. The state's going to tell you what to do and you don't like it." Well, let me tell you something. The state can tell us what to do, but if there's a state statute behind it, we don't have any choice. And if they don't give us any money, we're going to increase people's taxes in order to pay for that statute that they made us function. Okay? There's another 20% of the stuff that's mandated by the state that we either don't get any funding for or that they're not exempting. Are we whining? No, no, no. We'll play the cards, we'll play the hand we're dealt when the hand is dealt. What I'm saying is, we have no idea what the dealer's about to give us. I think that our initial resolution stands. I'm comfortable with the idea that they understand where we're coming from and that we do not want them to say, "Guess what? It's on your plate now." All right, well, then next session, we're going to be marching back there and we're going to be telling them to strip all of those state statutes that force us, we don't have any local control, that force us to do things that we can't pay for. That's what we'll do. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Commissioner Rogers?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Let me say, I respect everybody's opinion, but I think, you know, I think people have made the case why you do need to be on record for it because the fact is, everybody's saying it's bad, but you don't want to vote no on it. Everything in it, from process to everything, says that it is bad. And by not voting on it, it's setting some new precedent that we've never honored in some degree. I mean, if that's the case, you can say that about every bill that we've opposed that go before the legislature because any of it can be altered, moved, or anything to that degree. Now, if you're saying we've got the hand we're dealt, that the hand we're dealt is, these are the things that are on the table. We need to be on record to do it because what's going to happen is, yes, the lobbyist knows where we're at, we have something on record, but they're going to say, "You had opposition to a concept." These are the concrete things that are there and where do you stand? And if they say, "Well, the board disagrees with it, they just didn't go on record," the next question will be, "Well, why didn't they go on record for it? They haven't went on record, they really must not believe it because they've been on record for everything else that's done." I think you need, you have to be on record and people are looking for us to be on record. I mean, people are asking, almost asking last week, "Did the county support that?" And I was like, "No, we tabled it." And so now we're going to come back this week and table it. Everybody is looking to see what the biggest county is going to stand on this. And in regards to everything said, if we are saying that you disagree with everything they're doing, why not be on record for it? I mean, this is, this is, this is not a good precedent of saying, "We don't know where everything is going to be at, so we're going to stay." I mean, no, you know where it's going to be at. You know it's bad. For instance, the example, the public safety exemption. Well, four years ago, public health was public safety because it killed hundreds of thousands of people because of COVID. So, you know, that language is great to some degree, but declaring what's public safety and things in that degree there is saying that one entity is greater than another. Yeah, it's got a priority, but it's not. The point that's not in there is you got all this technology cost that we got to do that's going to eat us up. Growing technology costs that are going to be there that's not there. And, you know, what do we do in respects to what Commissioner Boyle said in respects to, you know, the cost of salaries that are going to come under people that are not classified under there? That is going to kill us if you have this. So, you know, I would say, you know, please be on record for this because we have to be on record to show where we're standing. And if we have to come back every week and change it and do it, we should plan to do that. Thank you.
Thank you. Just briefly on my end, I do think that, you know, the thoughts expressed just now make sense, though I also do think we are on, we are on record against the 0% hard caps and also in supporting our other departments that are not law enforcement and criminal justice to also be able to have sufficient budget to conduct our services and also to maintain local control, et cetera. On top of that, we even added, you know, supporting behavioral health and public health to the extent that these bills are not. So again, I think NACO, League of Municipalities, and our July resolution still stand firm and have those parameters on record. I also think that, you know, both politics and policy require some strategy and right now the political winds are blowing towards, you know, LB34 and AM73, whereas these other bills are not in play at the moment. So we very well may need to strategize around this amendment if it even passes today. But unfortunately, the text for the amendment just came out yesterday around 4:00 PM, so we didn't exactly have time to rally some kind of resolution around where the winds are blowing now with AM73. Otherwise, we probably could have done that. So with that, I will be voting no for now, just so that we can strategize around the actual bill that's being pursued, LB34 and AM73 with LB34. And if we see that there's new substance there that wasn't covered by, you know, our resolution and hasn't been covered by NACO and League of Municipalities, then we can definitely strategize around a new resolution to cover that. So that's where I'm at. If there's anything else, otherwise we'll vote. All right, please vote.
Commissioner Garcia voting no. Commissioners Kavanaugh, Friend, and Morgan abstaining. All other commissioners voting yes.
Thank you. We do have two public hearings under Section 5. First one is a tax amendment update to the floodplain overlay section of the Douglas County zoning regulations with potential commentary by Stacy Gilman from Flood, which is our floodplain administrator. Hey, good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. Stacy Gilman, floodplain administrator for Douglas County Environmental Services, proposing today to amend the flood rate insurance map index number in our current floodplain regulations to list each individual map panel per new changes addressed by FEMA. And also the removal of the language to not allow fully enclosed areas of a residential structure below the base flood elevation. Can I answer any questions you may have?
Okay. So since it's a public hearing, I'm assuming I need to open the public hearing at this point and see if there's any comments by Commissioners or public on this matter. And if there's not, we can close the public hearing as well. Ms. Gilman or Teresa, do you know if we need to take action on this? It says we can take some today, so the action would be to approve the amendment?
Yes.
Yep, all right. Where's the will of the board?
Close it.
Yeah, we did close it. Motion approved by Commissioner Friend, second by Rogers. Please vote.
Motion passes seven to zero.
All right, that was simple enough. Thank you so much. We also have a second public hearing, Item B, application from Tom Wortman for a replat of parcel located at 2080 Campinale Road, Douglas County, 68106, listed on the final agenda there. Do we have anybody speaking on this?
Good morning, Commissioners. Laura Dietrich, planning and zoning coordinator. We heard a request from Tom Wortman, an applicant for a replat of a property at 2080 Campinale. So a little bit of context here, to the north of his property is Lake Platteview. There's a couple cabin-type structures that are encroaching on his property. So the two landowners came to an agreement and were going to exchange that little slice of land where the encroachment is taking place. And in exchange, there's a little, maybe less than half an acre portion of Lake Platteview that they would exchange for that little sliver of land. So this would not be a public process if it wasn't for our subdivision regulations when there is a dedication of right-of-way from the engineer. It has to come in front of you guys. So this will not create an additional building lot and we will not be rezoning. Planning Commission heard this at their July 29 meeting and recommended approval. I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you. So we'll open the public hearing for this Item B. If there's any comments from board or public. If not, we'll close the public hearing. And what is the will of the board? Motion to approve the application, second by Morgan. Please vote.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you. Next, we'll go into Section 6, Committee Discussion and Action. We have Item A, Finance Budget Report as Presented, as well as the Monthly Fee Report also as Presented. We will also mention briefly that, well, aside from the fact that the weekly personnel report from Civil Service is presented to us as per usual, we also want to mention that Commissioner Borgerson's committee for HR committee has been rescheduled. It's, it was today, but now it will be Tuesday, August 20th at 2:30 PM, so please take note of that if you'd like to participate. We do have a need for executive session, for litigation and anything else.
Labor negotiations.
And labor negotiations as well. Do I have a motion and a second?
Second.
Motion by Rogers, second by Morgan. Please vote.
Motion passes seven to zero.
We will now go into the executive session for a purpose of litigation and labor negotiation. We will now go into the executive session for a purpose of litigation and labor negotiation.
Motion to reconvene by Commissioner Morgan, second by Commissioner Rogers. Commissioner Borgeson?
Yes.
Commissioner Boyle?
Yes.
Commissioner Kavanaugh?
Yes.
Commissioner friend is absent. Commissioner Morgan?
Yes.
And Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Okay, motion passes six to zero. I just wanted to announce that on item... Under presentations, there was a motion to support LB1, LB2, LB16, and LR5CA, and to support LR1CA, LB28, and LB53. I announced that it had failed, but it in fact had passed. Due to our rules, item rule six, letter E, inter voting, unless otherwise required by Nebraska statute, a resolution or motion shall pass by a majority of those present and voting. To pass a resolution or motion must have at least a majority of quorum, which is three votes. An abstention will not count as a vote cast. We had three abstentions, so really there was four people voting in majority. There was three yeses, so the item passed. So I just wanted to stick that into the record and I apologize for any confusion. May I get a motion to adjourn?
Yes.
All right, motion by Commissioner Morgan, second by Commissioner Kavanaugh. Are you voting yes? Commissioner friend?
Yes.
Commissioner Borgeson, voting yes?
Okay.
Motion passes five to zero. We are adjourned at 10:57 a.m.